Hey guys.
Hey Tom, we can hear you, you're live as well.
Perfect. Yeah, I'm not sure why it wouldn't let me in, but for whatever reason, it wouldn't let me in.
Yeah, for some reason, you're joined as an attendee, not as the panelists. Let me see if I can find you the right thing to dial in as a panelist, hold on.
Alright.
Hi Josh.
I'm back.
Alright, sorry about that.
That's alright, I'm gonna lose my cellphone service in about a minute, it's gonna get squirrely for a second, but just hang with it and it comes right back. It's only about a quarter mile stretch on the road, but it does it, so.
Sounds good.
I won't lose service, I won't lose connection, I should say.
It is four o'clock and we have all board members present, so I am going to get the meeting started. Adam, would you like to kick things off and get us started?
I would, thank you Madam Chair. So, thank you for scheduling this additional meeting and joining us here this afternoon. Since we met Monday, our team has gone through, line by line, through all of the requests that we put forward and hope to clarify any questions that we had on Monday. We were also able to clarify that there is a way to use our unassigned fund balance from last year without requiring a special meeting. There's an executive order from the governor that allows us to get permission from the DOE to do that part of this funding process in lieu of a special meeting. I'll ask Michelle to talk more about that in a minute. But that's a significant development, that would mean that if we wanted a special meeting, it would only be for the long-term HVAC needs that we have. So that's pretty key, that makes me feel a lot better frankly, that that's an option. Because we were in the position of having to spend money that we didn't have yet, or risk having to really drastically shut down parts of our school if voters said no to our special meeting request for the funding we need just to run school this year. So I think the board ought to consider that and potentially use that as a better option for how we fund our issues for this year. Does not do anything for our long-term HVAC needs, it's still a consideration, but something that changes the optics on a lot of that. So, if it's alright with you Madam Chair, I'd like Michelle to share her screen and walk us through, first, the narrative document that she sent to the board just a little bit earlier, and then the specific funding requests that we brought forward. You'll note that because we were thinking of a special meeting at one point, our funding requests are all on the high side, meaning we want to make sure that we have more than we need and don't come up short. But changing that requirement from a special meeting to using our unassigned fund balance does change that narrative a little bit, where we can be perhaps a little tighter with our funding requests. But regardless, I'd like Michelle to spend the next 10 to 15 minutes walking us through those two documents, line by line, to get us all on the same page, if that works for you, Madam Chair.
That is perfect, thank you so much. Go ahead, Michelle.
Because I have to start by unmuting, so, thank you Adam, and thank you Madam Chair. And I recently shared a document with folks that is a summary of the process and contains links to the supporting information, so I'll walk us through that and I'll share my screen, so you can see what... Whoops, I need permission to share the screen. You're able to see a document titled Area School District Additional Resource Request. Perfect, great. So this document just walks through some of the information that we had talked about the other night. The administrative team has done a fabulous job going through and really vetting all of the requests, and I want to thank everybody for their efforts in that regard. We went line by line and reviewed and challenged each item that was proposed. So this document shows a summary of those needs. They are professional development, PPE, HVAC-related items, staffing, equipment, furniture, and cleaning supplies, and you can see the total is $1,331,312. The immediate needs, which do include some HVAC items, and that's for replacement of filters. We also have short-term needs for HVAC renovations, and then long-term needs for HVAC renovations. And that's $290,000 for short-term. And then the longer-term needs would range from 5.7 million to 7.2 million. You'll see, as I go later in the document, that we've used the high-side estimate of 7.2 million plus the amount of the short-term needs as estimates when considering bond scenarios. There's a full list of the requests here. Easier to read. Okay, so this is the supporting information for those totals that are in the summary document, and identifies masks and all of the PPE items here. Gives a total quantity breakdown per school, the total amount in terms of dollars, and then the status as of today regarding whether those items have been shipped, ordered, or back-ordered, or received. A lot of our requests have been received to date. There are some items that are on back-order and we're following up on that. We do expect, for instance, this item with the gloves with W.D. Mason, that they will be shipped next week. In addition to the PPE needs, this is where we have the ventilation for air filter replacements, and that's for operating items this year. You'll notice that in the HVAC plan, there are also air filter replacements, and that's part of the second year of replacement process. This is a placeholder for the HVAC plan, you'll see that on a separate report that has been reviewed previously. Staffing requests for per-building. We are requesting two FTEs for one-year teaching positions, two FTEs in Paris, a half-year long-term sub that's specific to COVID-related needs, two FTEs in permanent building subs, six FTEs broken out per-building for custodial help, additional time to make some of our, one of our nurses from part-time to full-time, and another one that's a proration less than one FTE up to a full FTE. And then down here, additional resources in terms of furniture in outdoor tents, tables for outdoor seating and stuff of that nature. Further down here, cleaning supplies, radios, I just want to jump up here for a minute, radios. We looked at our current supply and have increased our radios for staff to accommodate the fact that we'll have more individuals using outdoor space as well. The UV robot, storage trailers, alcohol wipes, and things of that nature here for cleaning and storage supplies, and hand washing stations to assist in more areas for students to wash their hands. This totals the $1,331,312. Our unassigned fund balance at June 30th of 20 was $1,512.74. So going back here, this is the list of the HVAC needs, I think folks are familiar with this document. Roger had reviewed this at the last meeting. And this was compiled with the assistance of Lance, looking at our buildings as a whole. Breaks down by building, for each building district-wide. The short-term needs, long-term needs, and then also identifies other items that were considered, but not recommended at this point in time, for various reasons. So these cost estimates are what feed into the projection for the bonding, and make up this range of 7.5 to 7.2 million. Again, we use the 7.2 as the high-end estimate at this point in time. Dean Edgar had assisted and provided information regarding the process for holding a special meeting and what our options are around funding the additional cost items that are requested. There are two options that can be pursued, which Superintendent Steele referenced earlier. One is petitioning the court for an emergency special district meeting, and the other is requesting authorization from the Department of Ed. So there's a general timeline here, if we were to petition the court, the timeline and process. This is if the board were wanting to move forward with this today, and if items were approved today for a special meeting, then there's a... You would be discussing the need to hold a special meeting, voting to petition the court. You view the warrant articles that would be provided to the court for the petition, provide notice to the court within 24 hours of a vote, and 10 days prior to filing for a petition, and then send notice to the Department of Revenue. This information is just summarized from Dean Edgar's document, which is, you can see here in full. It's a complete breakdown of the special meeting process. You can see there's much more information here in terms of the requirements to hold a special meeting and the steps to accomplish that. So the first day a petition can be filed would be 10 days after, and requires certification of the notice from the Department of Revenue. And then within 24 hours of receipt of the notice of the hearing, the district would post the notice and the court date and the purpose of the hearing. Upon receipt of the court order being granted, the request to hold a special meeting, you'd follow the process to hold actual district meeting, which would include your deliberative first session and the vote, which is the second session. And then if you're holding up, if your warrant includes an article for a bond, you would have to hold a bond hearing for a bond issue as well. There are draft warrant articles here for a special meeting. If you go with a petition for a special meeting, for the operating budget, this would be the draft language for the operating budget on the warrant, would be raising $1,331,312. And we would propose that that be funded entirely through unreserved fund balance, so no additional taxes would be raised at that time. The bond article is drafted here. And this includes all the districts, so here is the draft language for Amherst. Again, we've included the higher amount, $7,490, including both the short-term and the long-term HVAC renovations. You could potentially consider, you know, a portion of the short-term HVAC renovations as part of operations, or you could leave it in the bonding for the total of the bond renovation. Additional items that would need to be determined to finalize this warrant article would include the amount that is going to be bonded, whether we propose to put any interest income against that. And Lance was assisting with projecting a schedule for drawdown of our funds, and from that, we can anticipate any interest income. A lot of factors go into determining how much income might be generated from bond proceeds, and that's what this article's asking to identify too. It's saying, here's the total amount of your project. Are you wishing to use any interest that would be earned on the proceeds from the bonding while you're having those funds sit in an interest-bearing account prior to using them to pay for expenses for the project? So that's, in general, the process for holding a special meeting and petitioning for an emergency meeting. There is also a second option for operating expenses, and Dean provides some information here about that. Basically, you would request approval from the Department of Education, and he has some links here with more detailed information about how to go about doing that. If authorization is received, then that allows you to spend the additional revenues. You might recall that when we talk about spending the unassigned fund balance, when we were talking about that the end of last fiscal year, I said the only piece of the unassigned fund balance that is available is the piece that comes from the expenditure side. And that is because our spending is capped by the operating budget authorization that was provided by the voters when they approved the budget. This request for authorization from the Department of Ed would allow you to spend, it basically increases your budgetary authority to the extent that you have excess revenues that you could use, or unassigned fund balance that you could use to cover those expenditures. And then here are some sample bond schedules from the bond bank, and additional information about the timing for a bond sale for January, and what an amortization schedule would look like, bonding 7.49 million over 15 years, 20 years, and 25 years, and gives anticipated tax impact on each of those. Look at one as a sample to show. So this is, it looks just like a payment schedule, if you will. Prior to bonding, if you have the authorization to bond, you can also utilize bond anticipation notes to help finance the project before a bond issue is finalized. And some of that information is shared in the additional information from the Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank here, and their bond sale schedule, some of the prep information, and financing considerations are all there. I'm happy to go through any of this in more detail, but want to be cautious of your time as well.
Thank you, Michelle. Michelle, can you share those Google documents with the board members, please?
I already have, if our people are not able to access...
Not the spreadsheet.
Not the spreadsheet. Which one?
Reopening one.
Oh, I will share that one, yes.
Alright. So, board members, since we can't see the spreadsheet, I was working on sharing that, do we have any...
I'm staring right now.
Do you have any questions on the process for Michelle? Clarifications and things like that, go ahead and use your raise-hand function. Tom, I don't know if you have that ability, if not, let me know and I'll work you in.
I will be logging in on video momentarily, so I will solve that problem for us.
Okay, Terry, go ahead.
I raised my hand a while ago, I anticipated. So I just want to confirm that all of the short-term things that we need, we have enough money to cover that, if we're allowed to use it. We don't need to ask for any additional beyond the unanticipated funds that we were set poised to give back, but that we may instead use.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's more than enough, because I was a little bit unclear about that middle column of HVAC. Is that covered under that, or would that have to be part of the bond?
Let me do some quick math and make sure that it falls within the cap of our unreserved fund balance.
Because obviously, we'd like to do that sooner than later, and it looks like the soonest we could have access to funds, even if we did our special meeting and voters said yes, would be January for any additional HVAC, yes?
Yeah, well, there is a process to be followed.
Because I would say, before we finish this meeting, we should decide whether that middle column is going into the request for unanticipated or going into the bond. So I think we just can't move forward without knowing where that part's going.
Did folks get the meeting, get the invite for that file?
Yep.
Good, thank you. Let me know if you have any issues in accessing it.
By the way, thank you for explaining it really simply, as if we're young children, because I appreciate that. This is out of my realm of experience, and it's important stuff. So I really appreciate you bringing it down to a level that we feel secure with. Thank you for doing all the homework.
So, Michelle, were you able to run the number real quick, or were you busy giving us all?
I had to use my fingers to send the file, but I am now doing the count. So it will exceed the, let me put that on the worksheet, yeah, the worksheet.
Reopening resources summary?
Yeah, I'm gonna put that at the bottom.
Okay, just so we can see the numbers.
$290,000 was the additional amount.
So is there any portion of that maybe that we could put into... Because even if we had to split it up, I think that would make sense, to put as much as we can with the money that we hope we can have access to sooner, because those items seem like they need to be done sooner.
Looking at it, it might bring us over by like a couple thousand dollars.
Okay. Granted, our other resource requests are a little bit on the high side, intentionally, again, making sure we have more than we need, not less. And so I would anticipate we could reprioritize as we need to, to make sure those short-term HVAC things were taken care of. And those aren't bid numbers either, those are Rogers' budgetary numbers for HVAC, correct Roger?
That is correct.
Yeah, so those numbers, that $290 is probably high by itself.
Okay, that's fair, and so I just think that it's going to be really important for us to be clear right now, and clear if we do have a special meeting, which it looks like we'll probably have to still, that we're very, very clear about what we've spent on and what we made the choice to spend on, to deal with our immediate need, and what we're wanting to spend on and get the jump on, which is why we're asking for their attention in between cycles. So I think that just being extremely transparent about what's happening with which funds.
Ellen, you're next.
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay, Beth? So Terry asks most of my questions, thank you Terry. So I would want, I know when we talked the other night, and sorry, my Zoom in my office is not working, so if I start to cut out, I will go to the kitchen. So I know we talked the other night and Anna explained, as Bethany did as well, the additional staffing. I will admit it was such a long meeting that I don't recall all the details. And now that I've got my pen in my hand, maybe both of you could take a turn to just go through that summary of additional staffing because that number's higher than, I guess, than I thought it was. But again, long meeting. So whoever, Beth, you want to go first?
Whichever one of you, Bethany, maybe it could help. I think there's also some Anna in there. So, and I don't know how much of it has to do with Michelle talking numbers. So Bethany, why don't you give us yours?
Sure. So for AMS, there are two different types of positions. And we're talking teaching positions, not the custodial positions, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there are two different teaching positions in there. The first one is a long term sub for a teacher who is out on medical leave. That teacher is out or that medical leave is definite through the first semester. The second semester could be a continuation of medical leave or the teacher could return. We simply don't know at this point. So we've budgeted the second semester as being a COVID related expense. Because if that teacher is able to return, I will continue that, this teacher in that position for consistency for students. And move the other teacher to support other areas that we need in the building. The other type of position is a daily permanent building sub. This is something that we had posted for last school year and weren't able to fill at the time. But this is a substitute position. And there's two of these. So this is a sub who is pretty, is more or less guaranteed an assignment every day in the building. But it might be, it could be varied wherever there is a need in the building during the day. And the rate for that is, I believe, $150 a day. So it's a little higher than our typical sub rate. This permanent building sub also requires a teacher certification. So it just, it just has a little extra qualifications to it. So those are the two positions that you'll, the two types of positions you'll see in there for the middle school.
Okay, so Bethany, just a question about the long term sub for the medical leave. So the person who's on medical leave is also receiving their salary, I'm assuming. Adam, maybe you can speak to that? Okay, so, so there is the addition there. And then the two permanent subs, did you have two permanent subs in the budget last year, but didn't fill either of them? Or just you're going for two because of COVID this year?
We had posted one for each of the buildings across the, or each of the schools across the district last year, just one. I'm asking for two based on increased anticipated needs this year.
Okay, so what does this, now I own a school. I would love having permanent sub too. I get that. That's not an issue for me. So what does this person do at this high rate of pay? And I know it's teacher certification if, and I know this never happens, if they're not needed in a classroom.
I don't know that that has ever happened in the history of being in the school. There, there's always a need. In the past years, we have always been short on subs, if I'm being honest. So often we have teachers covering other teachers' classes and things like that, which defeats some of the purpose of all the health and safety measures we're taking this year. And quite frankly, don't have the extra bodies to do that this year. So I anticipate this person being, these people being busy every day.
And the anticipation of more absences, is that a projection of people getting sick with COVID or just the regular sick?
Well, I think it's a little bit of both, right? But put it this way, if we have a permanent building sub, that person would take the first positions that are available rather than going out for our daily sub pool. So, so we would use the permanent building sub first before we went out to a sub pool.
Okay, okay. So that's $300 a day. What's the total part, what is that total, Michelle, when it comes to a breakdown of that portion?
Can you run your question again?
Yeah, so if we're looking at two permanent subs a day at $150 a day each, it's $300 a day. Is that contract? Because these person, this is not the long term sub, so we're contracting this for an entire year.
Yes, yes, there's, so in the explanation there, it shows the full year with taxes and New Hampshire retirement. So we're talking about the permanent building sub, correct?
Right, I don't.
I'm talking about the right one.
Benefits for that person.
But, so there's no health, I want to be careful when we use the term benefits because taxes and retirement are also benefits. There's just no health and dental.
Okay, so I don't have the document open because it's really hard for me to do that while I'm, so can you give me a total?
So that, so would be at 150 a day for the full year, including wages, taxes and New Hampshire retirement, it's 33,900.
Okay, so times two.
For FTE, yeah, so the amount is 57,800. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that you didn't have access to the document, so I'm happy to share those numbers.
And I'm sympathetic again because of my situation as well. I understand having a floater person is a dream. I would be concerned about moving forward to another budget season with that line item. Definitely at two. I can see one, but I know that obviously we're talking different times. I just wanted to break down just to make sure I understood. So thank you.
I would agree, I would agree with that, Ellen. If it was a typical year, we would, we would ask for that one position because again, we would use that before we go out to a sub pool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Bethany, you and I know the sub pool is going to be, hi, want to come work in the classroom where the teacher just left with COVID? Right, I'm dealing with the same thing. So I completely, now I understand, just wanted to break down to see how much of the, you know, how much was that really part of that budget?
Absolutely.
I have follow up questions to the whole long term sub part. So just trying to make everybody aware that before we go on and then have to backpedal. I do have two, I have two people letting me know that they have a question about the long term sub part. So Ellen, with that in mind, before you move on to your next question, does it make sense for you to ask another question or should we let those two questions and then come back to you?
Um, do you want Anna to go or do you want to stick with Bethany for now with the long terms up?
Specifically about Bethany's.
Yeah, go ahead. And then Anna, Anna can sit back and relax for a minute.
Yes. All right, Tom, you had, you messaged me first about the long term sub.
Yeah, I had two questions and I forgot the second one. So I wrote it down and then don't know where I wrote it. So that's a good start to the day. Just the question on the long term sub specifically, it's only budgeted in here for half a year at 50,000 and change. Is that because the other half was already in the regular budget? And this is only going on this extra, on this, this specific resources sheet because it's considered a COVID expense and the other half isn't?
Yes, this first semester is not a COVID expense. This is an obligation for a staff who's out on medical. And we, and there is a possibility that that medical could extend a whole year. And none of this money could be a COVID expense. It's in there to show that if it is, if it is only a half a year, that we would retain this person to provide continuity for students.
Okay, and just the other question I had on the, on either that position or the permanent building subs. Could either, could either of them be used for remote teaching if we had a slew of remote teachers that are unable to? If we needed a remote teacher, can they fill those openings too?
The long term sub position, definitely. And the daily building subs, yes. I would assign, have to assign them based on their certification areas, but I'm intentionally looking for broad certification areas there that they can be used in as many places as possible.
So I assume they're going through all the same development or they will, once they come on board, they'll go through all the same regular staff development to get on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And Terry, you also had a Bethany specific question, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so I actually have two questions as well, but I remember mine. Yay. So first one is, it seems to me that we're also looking, that this is very specific to getting them trained, making sure they're comfortable with our new procedures and having that continuity of saying, okay, I know that they are comfortable with all of our precautions. Whereas if you're going to a sub pool and having random well meaning adults who are very used to a different system, you don't know how consistent they'll be in following these new procedures and being comfortable with the new way that we're doing things. So it seems like it's also a safety factor of getting somebody trained up and trusting their consistency. Yes?
Yeah, it does, it definitely provides a more consistency and it also provides us an opportunity to do some deeper training if that person is allocated specifically to a building. Yep.
Okay, so I would, I would say that's something that is unique to the circumstances and that a case could be made for. That normally, we have people who are very familiar with our schools and they, and they come in and they sub frequently. But it's a whole different landscape this year. And second, oh crap, now I'm just like, Tom, I knew what it was. Oh, you didn't fill it last year. Was it because you couldn't find a good candidate or because we just didn't have the money in time?
We had a few candidates and just didn't have anybody with the right qualifications at the time. But it also got posted almost just before we went out on on remote learning too. So the timing, the timing was off as well.
Okay, but we do believe that there are qualified people who'd be willing to fill this role.
Yep.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Um, so let's move on to Anna.
Sounds good. So in our opening resource document, we have asked for two one year positions. And what we're looking to do is to add those teachers to our pod model in order to be able to cover the students both in school and remotely in order to keep the numbers down and to be able to meet the qualifications of what we're looking for for the students. And I don't know if at this point in time, it might make sense to if I could have Adam, if I can share the screen and kind of talk about where numbers played out from yesterday, once we got all the parent information in to kind of see with the information in. So if everybody can take a look, so our total enrollments in person, our numbers, the teachers that we are looking at for those pods. So pods are going to change a little bit from some maybe a three person to a two person while still having that need for interventions in special ed. The numbers per classroom and per pod. You can see the remote numbers are up more. So our remote teachers from our beginning presentation where it was one remote teacher per grade level. And at this time, you can also see kindergarten remote, we have 20, 22 people that have selected that. So this kind of lets you see where we are for numbers and needs for teachers. And this takes into consideration the two teachers that we're asking for are already in, in this configuration. And so I don't know if that's, that's helpful, but from Monday and from all of the parents that hadn't filled out at the time, we had 31. And the office staff has made phone calls to all 31 parents to make sure that those remote numbers are as, as solid as, as possible.
Um, anything else to mention before I have questions answered, Anna?
It's, Ellen, go ahead.
So Anna, I can quickly see the shift and the need because originally we were not going to have remote learning for K. So right there, your, there's two teachers. So that, that's great, you know, and thankfully, because it sounds like some of our community members going into K. Although all, you know, we know it's not ideal. We know it's necessary for some families. And I think it's nice to hear that even again, you know, even though philosophically we felt in the beginning, it wasn't a good way to start out, there are certainly families in situations that need it. So I don't have any questions because that wasn't on the table before. I guess when we talk about these people who are remote or in person, because of our segments being so frequent, is it, are, in the professional development, will everybody be well trained to fluidly kind of move in and out of that based upon the numbers, not illness, but just based upon the numbers?
I'll take that one too. So, you know, we also, so yes. And we also designed the school, so the seven classroom teachers that we're now making remote, we also now have a space for them in the building. So if they fluctuate back and forth, we already were prepared for higher numbers of in person. So we're, we're prepared for that. And of those remote teachers that, that wanted to be in the building, they also can teach remotely from the building and have the direct communication collaboration with their pod because they were already on a pod. So if they would have to go in person, then there's no loss.
Oh, okay, that's great. That's fantastic. I'm just so incredibly impressed with everything you guys have done. You know, I had that little teeny tiny school and I have been working all summer. I cannot imagine the hours. And I just, to see it all come together, how you all had hoped and kind of, you know, with the information and the data you had, it's just amazing to me.
And as you know, Ellen, it takes a village.
It does. Yeah, no kidding. So, okay, so that really clearly answers all my teacher questions. I'm good.
Josh, you have a question?
Yes, but it is not related to teachers. So if we have other teacher questions, we can continue there. So.
I don't see any other hands up, so.
Okay, so looking at the sheet, the one thing I'm not seeing is any further technology needs. If we have, you know, extra remote students or may end up needing to all be remote. Is that something we feel confident we can cover with our current budget and isn't needed? Or is there a need there that we're just not seeing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. We're having, right now, there's just a major issue with sourcing laptops. We've, this, and just today, we heard that an order we had on its way had to be returned because one of the chips was flagged by the NSA as being compromised. And the shipment had to be returned to a country in Asia. So we're going to go with what we have to start the year with, with technology. And if there's purchases that we need to make, we're going to have to find already from our existing budget to fund those as the needs arise.
Okay, thank you.
Are you confident we'll be able to find the, find those needs considering it's probably going to be more in that $60,000 to $70,000 expense as opposed to the 200 and change that we talked about originally?
We're going to have to. I mean, that's, that's where we're at is that we're just going to have to find a way to do that. So yes, we will, we will find a way to make it work. And a number of parents have been great about saying that they're willing to provide a device for their children, at least to start the year. And so that helps quite a bit as well.
Any other questions about the, like, about this spreadsheet as a whole? Now that, that's kind of where we are right now on the resource spreadsheet. Does anybody have any questions? No.
I might, sorry, I was distracted by teachers.
That's okay. Do you have questions, teacher questions?
No, I think just going off the original presentation, we were looking at, what was it, 40 teachers, I think, 9, 15, 24, 30? It was 40 teachers and you want to add, what, two positions to that? Am I correct? That's what we're looking at based off the original pod listing. So, but it says on the, on the, based off this, now we need 46 teachers. So I'm just trying to reconcile where the differences are between the 40 that we originally had on there, the 46, and why we're only asking for two more. Or why we're only asking for two more now, unless I'm, unless I'm missing something, which could clearly be the case.
All right, so, oh. Anna, do you have a question to that or are you confused?
Maybe just not. So even on the original sheet, I think even on the original sheet, we had the two space holders that we would need, the two teachers in order to make this happen. We had 39. We had thirty-nine, thirty-nine classrooms, we had four going remote, so, so not to confuse it, um, you know, this is still with the two teachers that we needed.
Yep, you, you are correct. I, I forgot to include the remote ones at the bottom, so, um, that makes sense now. So that puts us, that, the numbers reconcile. I just couldn't get them to work out before, but now I see. Um, adding the four remote originals, it, it makes sense now.
Good, because my blood pressure just went up.
I was off three or four and I'm like, I don't know how we did that, okay. Uh, I, we did have a question on the equipment for the face shields. Are we confident that those will be here in time? Just going through the list of items that are in and items that have been ordered, haven't been ordered. I know that face shields are, um, especially for nurses.
Yeah, let me look at the, the response because we did just go through that again today to, to validate all of the equipment. We do have some that have been received, others that have been ordered, and we were following up with a vendor today to, to see if they're backlogged, but we haven't heard of a back order on any of them at this point. We do also have some as a, um, some on hand from the maker space, then in a pinch, we could use those. But they're, the ones that are on order are the ones that are preferred at, at this point.
Um, Anna and Bethany. Um, so Anna, you showed your class sizes super fast. If you wouldn't mind just like sending that to us, just so we could look at it a little bit faster, that'd be great. Bethany, I don't know if you're prepared to show it to us, but if you could also send it just so that we can like actually really absorb it a little bit too, or maybe just look at it a little bit longer.
Maybe you could share it, Bethany, so the public can see it as well?
That'd be great. So, um, the, the top chart there just shows our overall numbers of in-person and remote. And down at the bottom, you'll see our numbers of sections. So in fifth and sixth grade, um, we have six teachers who'll be on campus, so six sections. And you'll see the average class size there for on-campus. Yes, I know we can't put half a student in a class, but I just wanted to show how close we were to tipping one way or the other there. Um, our, we'll have two remote teachers for both fifth and sixth grades, so a STEM remote teacher and a humanities remote teacher for both of those. Um, and the remote class sizes are a little bit larger. You'll notice there, I met with the sixth grade team today and we talked through that remote class size of twenty-four. And if we wanted more, um, remote teachers and how that would balance, but the, the grade level, the feedback from the grade level was they wanted to prioritize the small, um, on-campus numbers for that first segment especially. And that they felt that twenty-four was still a manageable number. Um, and that they could meet student needs remotely that way and do some differentiation and small group work still and be very successful there. Um, seventh and eighth, you really need to look at as a whole. So across seventh and eighth grade, I have twenty content area teachers, five for each of the content areas. So five for social studies, five language arts, five science, five mathematics. Twelve of those teachers will be in, on-campus in-person, three for each content area. Um, seventh grade is our largest class. We have, um, just over a hundred and ninety students in seventh grade. Um, that was that large sixth grade class we had go through last year. So our on-campus numbers, um, are a little bit bigger there, so we've got twenty-two point three, um, for on-campus. Eighteen and a half for, um, the eighth grade class sizes, remote teachers, there's two per content area. Um, and those, um, you'll see the remote class sizes there as well. Um, I will say to accommodate some of those larger class sizes, we're looking at, um, you know, a, as, as folly as a school without walls seem sometimes, right now, it's actually working to our advantage in classrooms where we can open up those, those movable walls to open up extra space. So many of our classrooms are able to do that to help spread those kiddos out a little bit further. Um, in rooms where we don't have that, we'll look at some alternatives. So for example, right now in our science lab, we actually moved our big, um, table, science tables out of those labs and put in our smaller desks so that we can create some more space for students in those areas as well.
Um, what is, do you have a tipping point for especially sixth grade remote? Just because that is the largest remote group, do you have a tipping point? Or what will force another group to, another set of teachers?
So, so, um, I anticipate that, um, if those numbers go up at all, and, and we're trying to build in a little bit of room there, right? Because we know that if a student needs to come out and go on quarantine or, or be sent home, that we need flexibility in that, um, remote classroom to absorb that student, make sure they're getting what they need. Um, we felt like over the first six days, since that first segment's so short, that we're okay there and probably won't have students transition out in the midst of that. I expect that if our numbers stay similar, um, or even increase a little bit in that remote size that by segment two, I will probably need to go to three remote teachers. What that means for sixth grade is that I will either have, um, a teacher who teaches STEM and humanities as the third remote teacher and will rotate students, um, between those three remote teachers. Or I might have a, um, a STEM teacher who teaches one section of students in school and one section of students remotely. And the same thing for a humanities teacher. But I just can't anticipate quite what that looks like yet based on, based on our numbers. But that's already something that the team, um, the grade level discussed today and thinking, while we have to react to our numbers right now, how can we set ourselves up for long-term success going forward?
Perfect, thank you. Um, Ellen, I saw your hand go up first.
Awesome, Bethany. Like I said before to everybody, I'm just amazed by this. So I will say that I'm a little concerned about those larger numbers. I just want to vocalize that and so that we as a board can kind of continue to talk about that. You know, I hear a lot of people on the street say, oh, we're, we're going to stay out for the first two weeks, let them work out the kinks and then we're going to show up. So, you know, hopefully that works with that balance. And, you know, those remote numbers are pretty small, I guess, for seventh and eighth grade. But that twenty-four and twenty-two, that's, that's concerning to me. So I just want to verbalize that to consider, when we're considering funding. I know that we already talked about a few thousands over what our unanticipated revenue was, and I certainly don't want to go over that. But that, I just want to, I want it said that that's concerning. Thanks, Bethany.
Yep, thank you. I think it's important that our numbers are transparent where, where we are.
Yep, me too.
Uh, Tom?
So Bethany, where would you see the permanent building subs be used in this situation with a healthy staff and with, with teachers not missing time for, for COVID or an occasional, or how about, how about, how about a non-long-term absence? Somebody gets the sniffles one day and they're fine, the next day they come back in or they have a sick kid and they're fine and it's not COVID-related. Where do you see the permanent building subs fitting into this plan?
So I have a few positions where, um, where I will have an on-campus class, but I have a remote teacher. So if I have an on-campus class, so the students are physically there in the building, I will need someone to supervise and kind of be the eyes, ears and hands in the class while the remote teacher remotes into that on-person class to instruct that class.
And you mentioned that was one of your two possible scenarios, if, if more sixth graders came into the school or vice versa, where you had to alter that teaching split, where you could have somebody teaching two different subjects or somebody teaching a remote class at home and then a, a remote class in the building too. And that covers that scenario.
So nope, that's a, that's a to, that's a different situation. But right now, I, so that is, so perhaps that could be a teacher who wants to be on-campus and does one of their sections on-campus and then remotes to a group that's at home. This is a situation where, um, where I have, have students physically who are, want to be on-campus, want to be in the building, but I don't have a teacher, um, I don't have enough teachers to, um, to support that. And I do have a few of those to start the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Josh?
Yeah, uh, so I had a similar question to Tom, but I was also just, when we talk about, um, these spaces and, and I know that the middle school has more space, but what do we do? Or what are we thinking about in terms of if, you know, on-campus, a, a class of twenty-two point three students, uh, is fairly large? So how are we going to, i- if that balance sways, and I know it's a little more difficult in those older grades because you have content teachers that are content-specific, how are we going to manage that shift? Are we looking at the different spaces that aren't going to get used if we're not using the cafeteria? Are we putting kids in there? What are, what are we doing to keep kids socially?
So, um, we have reworked the entire building, um, and teachers and everyone has been awesome about moving things around. So instead of, if you're familiar with AMS, instead of having an eighth grade pod or a seventh grade pod, now we have, um, a social studies pod and an ELA pod and a math pod. So for example, in the ELA section, there are five classrooms with three groups of on-campus learners. So those, those three groups of twenty-two can spread out, um, if we want, we're viewing that as a cohort, right? Those three groups of students, so the teachers might team teach and open up those sections so that there's more space. Or, um, two of those three teachers could have a double classroom and the third teacher might relocate to an outdoor space that day or to, um, the cafeteria because we have a common bell schedule now, so we can use the cafeteria throughout our day. Or another location in the building that offers that. We're able to do that for, um, math, for, um, social studies, for ELA in those seventh and eighth grades. Science is a little bit trickier because, um, those classrooms don't have the open, the movable wall. But as I said, we've moved, we're moving out, um, a lot of those heavier, larger, more cumbersome lab steps, which are awesome for labs. But in this situation, we need to be a little bit more flexible. Um, and then I'm also working with the seventh and eighth grade science team to rework and reorder our curriculum so that we can take advantage of the longer blocks of time to be outside doing science. Outside and, and using those spaces, so they finally have time to, you know, go to the river and do some ecology out there or go and do a biotic, abiotic walk in the woods. So trying to build in some of those, those opportunities as well to make sure that our curriculum aligns to take advantage of our outdoor spaces.
Okay, well, I can see Ms. Ellen cheering down there for, for that kind of stuff. And I would definitely agree, I, I think, looking for alternative ways to get outside, spread out a little bit, uh, is great. And, you know, taking advantage of those two-hour sections as much as possible, um, so that it is not static. Because I, uh, you know, I think I've expressed before the, the concern over a two-hour block of time. But if we're using it properly, then, and hopefully it will, it will work, it will work well. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, if we have no further questions on the spreadsheet itself, let's move on to discussing the process, um, of it that Michelle laid out in the more narrative document. And yeah. So there, you know, does anybody have any process specific of what we need to do, um, you know? I think we, so, uh, Terry, to your initial question, Michelle did put in the information about that, um, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand HVAC, um, into the additional spreadsheet. It throws us over by about, um, a hundred thousand dollars, um, just so, over the unreserved fund balance, just so you're aware of that in case you missed it. So Josh, you have your hand raised.
Yep, so I, I just want to, a couple, a point of clarity, I think right now we're talking solely about the short-term stuff. Is that right? And how to handle, how to manage that? So to me, there's a philosophical question to be had around how we move forward. You know, I think we were good stewards in the spring in trying to return this money. And I think there is an argument to be made that we would be good stewards of this money to use it now, knowing what we know now. But there is also an argument to be made that we should potentially, um, you know, do the opposite and give voters a choice. So I just think we should have that discussion about how we're going to move forward on this money, with this money.
Um, given Josh's thoughts on that, um, because that is a big, you know, I, that is a big question about not giving the voters a choice on this, um, that as board members, we need to, we need to really think about, really need to discuss, um, and come to an agreement on. So does anybody have very strong opinions one way or the other, or even, not so strong opinions, but an opinion one way or the other about either using the money or returning the money? Wow, you guys exactly the same time. Terry, you go first.
Let me unmute. So I think part of what we get elected to do is to be, um, very on top of the day-to-day and making the hard choices. And then when it's appropriate, bringing things to our voters or deciding when it's just time to explain what we've done. And I think that this is a circumstance where because of timing and because, uh, it's just a universally held truth that we don't know what's coming down federally. We don't even know what's coming down from a state level. We've anticipated where we can. But these are reasonable things that we've been entrusted with the care and safety of our students. And we feel like it's non-negotiable that we need to do these things for their care and safety. And so I think we received a, a huge mandate from our voters to focus on safety. Even before now and before COVID was an issue. We had looked at our, our buildings overall and at some of the concerns that we had over safety. And so I think we have been given a mandate by our voters. And it would be enforcing that mandate by carrying forward with the most expedient course. And I think the most expedient course, now that we know it exists, is going to the state and asking for permission directly and then just explaining what we chose to do. That, that's where I fall on this.
Ellen? Terry answered half of my question there. Thank you, Terry, because I couldn't remember the process of just the unassigned fund balance, but we go to the DOE. Um, so Michelle maybe can answer this question, or Beth, you might know it as well. If by chance, for some crazy reason that we don't know yet, we didn't spend all of this money on these items, could we then still give it back to the taxpayers?
I can respond to that. Um, I, clearly I would need confirmation from the Department of Ed, but I don't think we've ever been in a situation where the Department of Ed would require that we spend money. I think that, you know, if we get authorization, it would be similar to our budgetary authorization that the voters approve in March and that you have a ceiling and you can't exceed that, but there would be no reason that we would need to spend up to that limit. But I will certainly verify that with the Department of Ed.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Um, I think I would echo Terry. I think she said it perfectly. You know, it's no secret that I own a small business and the impact financially that it has had on my small business has been challenging. But the things that I've put into place so that I can open up safely have been non-negotiable items. I can't open up if I don't have things in place. And I can't see anything on this list that, um, isn't that exact same story. So, you know, it, it's challenging for me to determine the PPE needs. And I'm thinking, what doesn't everybody bring their own mask? But of course, that's not the case in a larger school. So, um, again, when I went through it again today, I, I can't see anything on this list that really stands out to me. I wanted to hear about the staffing explained more and it makes complete sense. So, um, I, I would echo Terry. I think that our responsibility, I, I'm concerned about the delay if we were to bring it to the taxpayers. And does anybody know how long that could potentially take for approval?
Months.
Yeah, okay, so for me, that's just, it's just not possible right now. That's it. That's all I got.
Tom?
Uh, was it me or Josh first? Doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Hand back down, so.
Okay, um, so my question, just on, just reviewing that spreadsheet again, because I couldn't look at it when I was driving. We have filters in there, the MERV eleven and thirteen filters. It says that they're for FY twenty-one, it's thirty-four thousand. But we also have them in the short-term cost as part of that two-ninety. It looks to me like the ones that are in the resource sheet, the ones that we're planning on for this year are budgeted and then it's an additional thirty-four thousand that we're planning on for the additional school year. Is there a reason we can't take out that thirty-four thousand right now and reduce that number from two-ninety to two-sixty or whatever it would be? And then it reduces the amount that we're over on? I don't know if we need to be ordering next year's filters when we're still trying to get through this year, if we've already got this year's filters. And that way we're only replacing the DDC controls in all three buildings.
So let me start the response and then ask Roger to jump in with anything that I may have, uh, that, anything that needs clarification. We had reviewed that and the filters that are in the immediate list are for this year for replacing. And we kept the filters in the next year for the short-term process as the night, next cycle. And we kept the filters in the next year for the short-term process as the next cycle of replacing them. We've, we've not purchased all of the filters for this year, but we did feel that it was important to begin that process to increase some of those from MERV 8 to MERV 11 and 13. So we see them as two different years in the two different processes.
No, and I, and I see that, but I don't know why we have to order next year's now if, if our immediate concern is this year when next year's filters can just go in the budget for next year. We can plan on that as a $34,000 line item under facilities and maintenance, something that, you know, it's good to have regardless of pandemics or not.
We can certainly do that. We included them in the list because this increases ultimately due to COVID. And that will come out of operating budgets next year and will impact other educational costs in the operating budget.
Okay.
If the board chooses to do that, we'll certainly make that adjustment.
And, but there's no, we can still, I'm trying to think here, we can still use, can we use, if we remove the ones for next year from, we're not going to purchase ones for next year, can we still use unassigned fund balance to buy the ones that we're, we're currently buying or that we're going to buy for the remainder of this year?
Let me see if I can capture your question. I'm not sure that I followed that exactly. But if the ones that are in the short-term needs on the HVAC list
Yep.
were included in the bonding estimate. And so by the time we get through that process and we're drawing on funds, we'd be closer to next fiscal year than this fiscal year in that process. The ones for this year are in the immediate needs. Because I'm not sure if I'm hitting upon your question.
Yeah, no, it just seems to me that we're buying two sets of filters and I, I don't know that we need to buy two sets of filters. If we want to put filters into something that we're going to bond, I'm trying to get us as close to the 1.51 million as we can by removing anything extra because we already have a lot on there. So I'm trying to get us close to that 1.5 million so we don't have to go to any bonding for this year. We can just look at the law, or any short-term bonding for this year. We can just look at long-term only, which will inevitably reduce that number potentially. That, that's all I'm trying to do here.
Let me clarify that. So the bonding would be one issue. We've only categorized the expenses for HVAC as short-term work, if you will, versus long-term work. But it would, it would be one process to bond, to finance the entire amount. We can purchase this year's filters out of this year's budget. Technically, operating budgets are meant to cover the one-year operating needs. So purchasing filters out of this year's budget for next year really wouldn't be appropriate. So we would, if we don't put them in the bond article, they would then fall in next year's operating budget.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going strictly, again, I'm trying to get us, because we're at, going off the resource sheet and I'm sorry to, to be harping on this. I just want to fully understand it. Right now, our total resource request is 1.3 million and change. If we add in the short-term HVAC needs, it takes us to 1.62 million and that puts us 109,000 over. In that short-term HVAC needs, you have, and again, it's a small number, but it's, we're not that far over the 1.5 million. So if you take out another 34,000 out of that, out of those short-term HVAC needs, that goes down to 256 and it brings your overall overage to about 74,000 as opposed to 109,000. That's, that's all I'm trying to do. And it sounds like we're buying two sets of filters. So I say, if we can avoid one, it's going to get us closer to that 75. I know that's not where Beth is going with talking about the, the ethics or the morality of how we want to approach this, using this money. But I'm trying to see if we can get as much as we can so that we don't have to worry about bonding any short-term things if we want to stay at the 1.3 only.
So you would take it out of the current year operations. We can certainly do that. Then the purchases of the additional filters would come out of proceeds from the bond. Did I follow? Because you would want to take it off of this operating list.
I don't think he wants to bond it at all, Michelle. I think he wants to add it to normal operating in our next year's budget. Like in, when we present a budget in March, it would be a line item in that.
We can do that. I mean, it doesn't have to be in.
Because I think it's, it's a matter of when's it going to be used? My question would be, is it going to be used physically before the end of June? So it says 21, but would it really be like the, the first half of 21 where it's really this school year? I guess that's.
Well, let me clarify also. Fiscal year 21 is anytime from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. So we call it FY21, but it, it ends in 2021. So it's this year. It's this fiscal year.
Yeah, I have, I guess Roger, if, are we buying to, basically with everything, if we were to go to 1.3 and then the short-term HVAC needs, we're buying two sets of filters, correct?
Yeah, Tom, I see what you're getting at. I think the immediate need is that we need the filters to get them installed for this fiscal year. We remove them from the short term and then just add them to the operating budget in the years moving forward.
Yeah, because if we remove them from the short term, we take that 290 down to 250 and that gets us closer to being able to fit everything we need short-term underneath that. Good, but here, so here's my overall concern is if we decide, all right, we want to put the 1.3 million, we want to take that out of unreserved fund balance, we, we return 200,000 and change to taxpayers instead of 1.5 million. So now we're going to have a bond issue or a bond that we're going to try to get passed for, was it 7.2 million, Michelle? On the high side, I think it was. That's going to cover all short-term and long-term HVAC needs. So my concern is, is if that fails, then we're not going to have any of those HVAC needs done. So we're going to be having outdated controls. We're not going to have the control monitoring that we really want, where we can tell if an air handler's blocked, everything that Roger touched upon last time. So my goal that I'm trying to do is to fit everything we can under the 1.5 million short-term. So that way, if the long-term fails, then we, we don't have to worry about that for this year. It's not going to impact what we're trying to do for this current school year that we're trying to get open in a couple of days. And so that's, that's my ultimate goal. If it can't be done, it can't be done. And we can put it all in the bond and just say, you know what, Roger's going to have to get up there and crawl through air ducts every day to make sure that none of them are blocked. It's probably better than Adam's basement where he's been locked up, but you know, that's, that's would have to be the end result. So that's, that's my goal with this. And that's, that's where I'm, I'm trying to go on this with that, with that money. But I do agree with Terry and Ellen. As much as I hate not going to voters for the unreserved fund balance, I, I think that in order for us to have the education that we want, in order for us to have the education that the community parents are supporting, 67-odd percent, I think it's exactly two-thirds of students in Clark Wilkins. I didn't do the math on AMS. It wasn't locked there long enough for me to figure it out. Or I should say, it wasn't added all up for me. But we're going to be around 60 to 70%. That's, that's a majority. And if you, if you have that majority, I think that's, that's what you're hoping for. If we had 20% of kids that wanted to go back to school and we're going to spend a million and three of unreserved fund balance, I think that'd be irresponsible. I don't find this as irresponsible.
Okay. No. Yeah. All right. Josh, your hand is back up.
Yeah. So on the technical side first, I assume that if we authorize this 1.5 million, there is wiggle room, just like when we did before, that if you decide what you really need is more masks and fewer gowns or more of this and less of that, you can move that around. That essentially, we're authorizing the 1.5 million and then you guys will figure out exactly how to use it based on the sheet that we're seeing now. But there might be some changes. So if, if we can get cheaper filters, we will. And if not, then we might have to wait. Is that right?
That would be my understanding.
But, but with that, if we decide that we want to put all the short-term HVAC into a bond and that bond fails, then we cannot replace those DDC controls with money that's left over out of it. You know, we can't move things around in the unreserved fund balance to come up with 190 or 200,000 to replace those. So that's where the, you know, again, I don't know how drastically important if those filters are good enough to get us through this year and we don't need to include those in a, in the operating budget or in the, the extra resources we're asking for out of that unreserved fund balance. I don't know. I mean, Roger would be the one that I would ask to say, you need to do that. You need to try to get this in because we can't risk it failing. Obviously, we can't risk PPE failing. And it sounds so, it sounds crass to say it that way, but you know, we need that PPE to be, be able to open schools. You, you can't physically do it without that. So.
Okay. So here's, just because we also have a South Gigan meeting backing this up. So we need to keep this moving. So here's what I'm hearing is, and I think I might be speaking for everybody, but Tom has a valid point that we need the short-term HVAC stuff to happen this year, not including it in a bond. If you, yes. Okay. Everybody, okay. So with that, we need to keep the short-term that and the other immediate needs under the 1.5 million that we've already returned to taxpayers and include that and including our current operating budget, okay, for this year. With that in mind, there's a lot of things in here that include an entire year's worth of PPE, which I really hope we need. It would be awesome to need all 10 months' worth of PPE. But with that in mind, I'm assuming we are ordering them in chunks, like half the year at a time. So in case we don't, we aren't able to stay open for the 10 months. But we're also hearing that there are things within here that, you know, if something costs between, you know, $3 and $8, we took, you're, you know, or $5 and $8, we took the $8 per whatever, per mask, per whatever, because when it came time to order, we don't know how much it's going to be. So we did, there was some estimating on the higher side for some of this. So I think with that being said, and I guess what we're saying is, administrators, we're going to, you know, obviously, we're going to put this to a vote, but we need this to happen within a set number. If we can, you know, we need to save as much money as possible so that in the end, if, it would be great if we could get all of this done and still be able to return some of that 1.5 million dollars to taxpayers because it wasn't all used. But we also know that we need to do it safely. We need to be able to open up these buildings as safely as possible. So taking all of that into consideration, you know, is, you know, the thought. So, all right, we need to vote on going forth to the DOE, asking to use all of the unreserved fund balance plus the extra reserves or not the, revenue. Sorry. I don't know how that, you know, I don't know if we need to, or if it's just included as part of the executive order. But I need a motion to go to the DOE and to use, asking them to use the 1.5 million dollars, which is includes excess revenue from last year plus an excess unreserved fund balance. I saw Terry raise her hand for a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Josh. Roll a call. Josh?
Yes, Kunklin, yes.
Terry.
Amy, yes.
Tom.
Goethier, yes.
Ellen.
Cretin, yes.
Okay. Kuzma, yes. Now we need to have the conversation about the long-term HVAC needs and whether we need to go forward with asking the Supreme Court or Superior Court, Superior Court for permission to hold a special meeting to get this done sooner than March and to ask voters for it sooner than March.
Doesn't necessarily mean it will be done before March, correct? It just means that we'll be on the, we'll be in line before March when everything gets approved, meaning that we have its chance to get it done within the next calendar year, but not necessarily by the end of the school year.
Correct. Yeah. They, if we, you know, let's say November is when we can actually hold the special election where people can vote on whether or not we, they're going to bond to this for us. Even though that happens, we wouldn't be able to access the money until January, but we might not be able to get people in the building to do the work until over the summer. But if we asked for it in March, from what I'm hearing from Adam and Roger, we might not be able to get people in the building until next summer, so the summer of 2022, to do the work. So we would lose two school years of having upgraded HVAC instead of one. So Terry, I see your hand raised.
Yeah. So I am still for petitioning to have the special meeting because I think that there's been such a deluge of information and it's been, I think our district's done a fantastic job and it really kept parents informed. But I think if you're not a parent, you probably don't understand a lot about what's going on. And so it would be a great opportunity for us, no matter what, to speak to our greater community and say, here's what we have done, here's what we did with these funds we just authorized if we get permission. And then here's what we want to get in line to get done as soon as we can, to jump it in priority of something we already knew we had to do so that next year, we're even safer in the year after. So I think I'm very much for having that opportunity to speak to our community in a meaningful way and to get a contract on the books so that we are in line in a timely manner. I think that makes a lot of sense. And when rates are low and we can, we can do it cheaper overall. The only thing I'm against is the same as when we met Monday, is that I want to make sure that we don't have to do an election out of cycle. So if we can make it happen in time for when we already have community members showing up to vote, I'm 1,000% for it. If we would have to do it out of that cycle and do another election, I would be really hesitant to ask them to come out physically or even by mail. It starts to get confusing and really difficult. So a lot will want to come in person and I don't want to have to ask for that above and beyond November.
Ellen.
So I have some concerns as a JFAC member, deep inside our district, looking at our buildings of adding anything to Clark, doing any work at Clark at this time. So I'm not sure if that's included. I couldn't really figure it out in the breakdown. Honestly, I'm a little concerned even with the Wilkins situation. I, I think if we weren't in a pandemic right now, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation when we're talking about Clark Wilkins with hope that what we have coming forward down the pike, hopefully very soon, is going to change most of this conversation. The middle school, it may be potentially another conversation. But, and I, and I will piggyback on Terry, to have this be a special meeting outside of what is already scheduled for not September, but November, I think is asking a lot of our community. And, you know, we're all in an uproar about what we have to do during voting. Regardless, to add another vote to that list would make me a little uncomfortable and I think there would be a lot of confusion around it. So I, I'm teetering on the, you know, are we ready to put this in front of a community that's struggling with job loss, forloes, layoffs? And in a reminder, in my house, you know, we own a small business and my husband's a part of a large company. And the conversations at the beginning of COVID didn't start for layoffs, but they're starting now. So I'm, 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 I have to say, I'm very cautious about moving forward with this item. Not cautious about what we need right away this school year for COVID. But I'm very cautious about laying this out. I think it would be horrible timing.
Josh?
Yeah, I mean, I'm of two minds. I, I believe that I like the idea of getting in line early and getting the work done that if it needs to be done, if we're not spending money we wouldn't otherwise spend. But, you know, if we don't have confidence, if what I'm hearing is that there, there may be some lack of confidence from the JFAC community around exactly what's going to happen and we spend a million dollars that we wouldn't have to otherwise spend, that, that, that may hurt our messaging on the bigger ask, which is going to be our buildings. And I worry about the, the messaging around asking for a bond now at $5 million and then asking for what I would think is a much more important and much larger scope bond in March for however much it's going to be. So I worry that we might get a little, we might have trouble messaging like, hey, we're asking for it now, but it's not going to get done now. And then we're also asking for a building or addition in March. So I, I, I like the theory behind, behind getting in line early, but I worry both about the messaging on this and about if it fails, is it, is it, you know, a rolling ball that, that causes our larger bond to fail? Or even if it succeeds, do people think, well, we gave you that $5 million, so we don't want to give you another 30? So I, I do, I do struggle with this. I guess one suggestion may be to give this a little time. I, I know we want to get in line as soon as possible. I know we want to be ready by November. I, I don't know that that's realistic in this scenario. in this scenario.
Tom?
I'm going to say I agree with Ellen. I I, the more I think about it, the more I think it's smarter for us to get short term stuff now with everything that's going on with the pandemic, knowing that we have two other votes between now and November that town people have to do. And then we have to plan for, I think we try to include it as part of whatever bonding we're going to potentially put up in March, so. Sorry, and the other thing is there's no guarantee it's going to be done before the end of next school year. So to me, that it's even less of a pressing need when it, the the optics of it are less pressing when it's not even going to be something that, you know, by this time next year, this may be a lot different scenario where we don't. This is not as big of a crisis and let's, let's hope that's the case. Let's hope that's the case by March, but I think that's, you know, I.
And I think, I think if we can get our, I think we need to focus on our larger bond that that is coming. And if we can get that through, I would imagine that some of the issues we would see in getting in line, if we have a $30 million project to offer a company, we may jump to the front of their line rather than, you know, a $5 million project would be my hope.
Adam, you have a thought?
I do, so I'm I'm really appreciating this conversation. So my, my concern was getting through this school year, number one. We've addressed that. We have a plan that we voted on that as long as the DOE approves it, we're all set and I feel much better about that. And I feel much better looking our teachers in the eye and our staff in the eye, saying we have what we need to get this school year done. Don't have to wait for a meeting to know for sure, because that was concerning. I don't like the answer I gave. It was the right answer, but I don't like it that we're going to have to potentially go to status red for the rest of the school year because we wouldn't have the money to operate our schools if voters said no to the stuff we need to run this school year. So I feel much better about that. I also feel okay with waiting on the long term HVAC side of things. Primarily because we still have, we're right at the inflection point with with the JFAC, with figuring out what our long term plans are. And this feels like we could interfere with that process and have unintended consequences to Josh's point. And there's no need for that. We, we're not going to do anything better than what we're going to be able to do for this school year. Which means even if COVID remains an issue for several school years, we have a plan that we can deal with and 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 get through if we need to. And so I all around feel better about it. I still feel committed to our long term facilities plans. But that, at this point, becomes a higher priority than fixing these. Than than fixing these HVAC issues. So I've, hearing the board discuss, discussion has helped my thoughts evolve and I just want to share that as well. And just to be clear, so I'll tell a quick story, then I'll I'll move on. But it's been about six, seven years ago, but Roger Preston and I took a trip to a school district that has the top facilities in the state as far as, as far as I was concerned, the Plymouth School District. And Roger and I took a ride with all of our facilities folks at the time because we wanted to learn, what are you doing? That's resulting in much lower attendance issues, much lower absences, both for staff and students. Tell us what you're doing. And they walked us through it. They said it starts with air quality. We've got UV lighting and all of our ductwork for all of our HVAC systems. And here's how we clean the school. Here's how we, how we build the school, all of that. And that made an impact. And so that's why our long term capital maintenance plans included the UV filters in our ductwork. So it's pre-COVID. This is not, this was even before COVID. We had already identified, we've got air quality issues that we want to make better. So all that to say, thank you for your feedback from the board side. I'm going to sleep better tonight knowing we have the funding to run the school year and I feel better about coordinating with JFAC. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we did add. I did add one other kind of slightly off topic agenda item to the agenda for today. Josh?
Sorry, do you see the, in the chat, the, what we need to read into the record?
We don't need to read that into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
It was only if a motion was made.
I see, I see.
Um, okay, so there has been, um, there's a lot of communication that needs to happen with, about what's going on, things like that. There's been some conversations, mainly, you know, just with everything that's going on with COVID, but in general, it's just, you know, kind of come to light the importance of it now. That we have a lot of people that use Facebook. We have a lot of other forms of communication that we use. There is, within Facebook, we still have rules that certain numbers of us are not allowed to, or certain quantities of us are not allowed to reply to comments on Facebook that involve topics that have hit the school board. But we also need, you know, to rely less on SAU communication and communicate more as a board. As part of our goal setting and things like that, as part of that, it is helpful to kind of have a board's thumb up, thumbs up and approval of who those communication people will be versus just kind of a free for all. And then with that, there's been, you know, I actually did hit a, the communications training, Tom and I both hit that that the New Hampshire School Board Association put on. And there are some ideas on ways to not only use Facebook for those that don't, but also have, you know, maybe doing a website and things like that that is specific to us and things like that. So we are looking for two of board members to kind of be the communication leads that will be the go to people that will be the ones that are acknowledging and, you know, making some of the Facebook posts and things like that and that will kind of coordinate with that. As well as kind of work on getting that website up and running and stuff. I personally would like to see Tom be one of them since that's kind of what he does for a living and he's great at it. You know, that doesn't mean that we won't take input and thoughts of a, you know, FYI, I saw this, you know, question on Facebook, you know, in case you didn't see it, sort of a thing. But, you know, I think Tom, so just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
So anyway, can I also nominate Josh? Can we nominate people?
Yep.
Thanks. I nominate Josh.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
I was going to say the same. I I feel like.
Terry, thank you.
Josh does a great job in in a written way of of expressing things in a very understandable, relatable way. And I think that that's a real talent that he has. And I think that for Tom, he's got a real talent coming from his professional background. So between the two of them.
I see good collaboration there. And I know, Tom, I don't think, Tom, maybe I don't know this, but is maybe not a big Facebook user. So Josh, maybe you guys could delegate that up. Tom, I don't know how webs, how many websites you've created, but it's super easy. And I'm also wondering if just a blog kind of, you know, how we do our letters to the editor, that could actually be a little blog that we use on the website and that can be reposted on Facebook.
There's, um, there's actually part of the training or, you know, the communication training was all about, it's using like a website blog. Where you kind of do that, but we can link all of our letters to the other, we can even go back historically and do it.
We're doing one for JFAC right now.
Yeah.
So it would be linked right off the SAU page too, just so it's not too many, you know, all the resources are in one place.
Yeah, and we.
Love that idea.
I'm assuming we would be allowed to, I'm I'm assuming we'd be allowed to put the link on the Amherst School Board tab on the SAU page. Okay, good, because that would be really handy. All right, so with that, I do want to take a public input really quick. If anybody has any public inputs, I didn't do it at the beginning, but I do want to take it now. Kanga. Unmute yourself, but you're free to talk.
Okay, hi, Kanga Gase, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Kanga Gase, 29 Old Manchester Road, Amherst. I just wanted to share my comment about the $90,000 for the UV lights. I just wanted to say that, make no mistake, I believe UV lights will not change the cleaning habits at schools. As a worker at the hospital, I can tell you that UV lights do a great job killing bacteria and viruses. But they do not get rid of 1,000 sticky little fingerprints from desks, chairs, et cetera. UV lights have been around for a long time and there's a great benefit to them, but they haven't been used in classroom setting yet. The judgment is still out. This is the first year it's being done. So I do think it's a lot to ask of taxpayers to put $90,000 into something that hasn't been utilized yet. So the UV light kills the bacteria or viruses that are in immediate reach. So let's say the child touches a book and puts the book on a shelf between other books. UV light will not penetrate that area. So we know that coronavirus is spread via droplets, via coughing, sneezing, talking. There are some studies showing that it can stay on the surfaces for quite some time. Some others do not confirm that. What I'm trying to say is, we really don't know how beneficial it is. So I do think it may cause a little bit of controversy as, like I said, it is a good chunk of money considering that there is no studies proving that it does make a difference in the classroom setting. Thank you.
Thank you, Kanga. Okay, um. Larry?
Yeah, I've just, as a feedback for a public comment, there's been a lot of discussion about HVAC this week. But I'd like to see more discussion about safety and reviewing the actual SAU plan. School opens in less than two weeks. PPE like mask, gloves, gowns, face shields were just ordered two days ago. From the sheet, it doesn't look like.
Sorry, Larry. Hold on, you do it yourself. I was trying to lower your hand. Go ahead.
Okay, my back?
I'm sorry, that was my fault. I was trying to lower your hand.
It's okay. I would just, in in terms of board meeting, there's been a lot of discussion this week about HVAC, but very little discussion about safety and and reviewing the actual plan that the SAU board adopted. With school opening in less than two weeks, PPE like masks, gowns, gloves, face shields were just ordered two days ago from it looks the sheet. The outdoor classroom materials does not look like they've been ordered. And with class sizes at 22, will social distancing be able to happen? Because kids are going to have to take off their masks to eat lunch in the classroom. Portsmouth just had to change their plans because they couldn't even do three foot social distancing. So in future board meetings, I would like to see some scrutiny over the the safety aspects of the plan for for the teachers and the students alike. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have any other public comments from the public? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Can I have a second? Josh, seconded. Roll call, Terry.
Aim, yes.
Ellen?
Virgin, yes.
Tom?
Gothea, yes.
Josh?
Conklin, yes.
Kuzma, yes. Thank you, everybody.